Okay, the livestream should be up any second.
Okay, thanks Eric.
Alright, you guys are live.
Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. Happy New Year. I will now call this January 16th, 2021, meeting of the Board of Trustees of Illinois State University to order. I note for the record that this meeting is being held pursuant to Governor Pritzker's Executive Order 2021-1. As Chair of the Board, I determine that as a result of the disaster declaration issued by Governor Pritzker, an in-person meeting would not be prudent, practical, or feasible at this time. And as a result, this meeting is being held as a virtual meeting with no one physically present at our Board's regular meeting location in the Bone Student Center. As included in the notice of this meeting, the university has provided a YouTube link that allows all interested persons to contemporaneously view the meeting and hear all discussion and roll call votes. Accommodations have been made for presenters and persons wishing to make public comment to participate in the meeting via Zoom. Trustee Lauterback, would you call the role?
Yes, I will. Trustee Bone?
Present.
Trustee Dobbski? Trustee Donahue?
Present.
Trustee Jones?
Present.
Trustee Lauterback, present. Trustee Navarro?
Present.
Trustee Turner?
Yes.
Chairperson Jones, we have a quorum.
Okay, I'm assuming that Trustee Dobbski will be joining us later. I know he did respond regarding the meeting notes, and he did not, I don't think. If anybody saw, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think he responded that he was not available. Okay. Thank you, Trustee Lauterback. I ask that each trustee confirm that they can hear me, the other trustees, and all discussions. Trustee Bone?
Yes.
Trustee Donahue?
Yes.
Trustee Lauterback?
Yes.
Trustee Navarro?
Yes.
Trustee Turner?
Yes.
If at any point during the meeting you have difficulty hearing any other trustee or any discussion, please let me know. Also, pursuant to the requirements of the Open Meeting Act, all votes taken at today's meeting will be roll call votes. Each Board member's vote on each issue will be identified and recorded. You have before you the agenda for today's meeting. Can I have a motion and a second for approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Motion of Trustee Lauterback, second by?
Trustee Bone.
Trustee Bone, thank you. Trustee Lauterback, can you please take role for the vote?
Yes, I will. Trustee Bone?
Yes.
Trustee Dobbski?
Yes.
Trustee Donahue?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Uh, yes.
Trustee Lauterback, yes. Trustee Navarro?
Yes.
Trustee Turner?
Yes.
The vote passes.
Thank you, Trustee Lauterback. Just to go back, I thank you for joining us, Trustee Dobbski. Sorry, we got a little bit of a jump. Just want you to confirm, Bob, that you're able to hear us well, and just give us a yes if you are.
Oh, yes, I am. I can hear.
Okay, thank you, Bob. If you have any problem hearing us at any time in the meeting, please let us know. You might have to send a text or send us something in the chat box.
Okay, no problem.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is public comment. We have three individuals who have indicated an interest in making public comments to the Board today. In accordance with policy, the Board of Trustees will allow up to 30 minutes in total for public comments and questions during the public meeting. An individual is permitted no more than five minutes for his or her presentation. If more than one, if more than two persons wish to speak on a single item, it is recommended they choose one or more persons to speak for them. The Board of Trustees will accept copies of the speakers' presentations, questions, and other written, relevant written material. If you have any written materials you want to share with the trustees, you may send them to bot@ilstu.edu. When appropriate, the Board of Trustees will provide a response to the speaker's questions within a reasonable amount of time. At this time, I invite Ashley Para to proceed with her comments to the Board.
Hello, thank you for having me today. I have a statement on food scarcity and homelessness in graduate students. I am a second-year lighting MFA student in the School of Theater and Dance. In August of 2020, two weeks before the start of the fall semester, my roommate, an international student, texted me saying that she would not be returning to school in fear of traveling the country during a pandemic. She was then denied her assistantship for not doing so. I had to find a replacement, but more and more students were choosing to stay safe and healthy in their homes. This was not an option for me, so I had to find a roommate, anyone, if I were to pay my rent. My stipend before taxes is $10.60, but after taxes and other fees, I get $933.20 deposited to my account. A breakdown of my monthly expenses is rent, $8.50; bills, $270; transportation, $30; groceries, $100. I needed $1,250 to survive, and I was handed a misery of a stipend, thoughts and prayers, and lots of "I'm sorry, that must be rough." It was rough. My love for studying here at ISU, my value for education was a burden. The chains of capitalism laid heavy on my body, and I felt its effects quickly. I was desperate for help. After two weeks of worrying relentlessly, I found a roommate. He was a 40-year-old man doing his rotations at a local hospital here in Bloomington. He was friendly, and he would pay rent and bills upfront. And I said yes and helped him move in. We were getting along until one day, after telling him about an injury I had on my knee, he asked if he could help. He insisted on looking and touching and fixing my injury. Every day for a month, I barricaded my bedroom door before going to bed. Every day for a month, I learned which four birds creaked the loudest, and I felt trapped in my own home because strangers violated my boundaries. And I let it happen because I did not want to be homeless. I needed a roommate. I needed to pay my rent. So after this situation and another failed roommate attempt, I had no more options but to live alone. For two months, I ate one meal a day, went to the food pantry every week, and was fed by other graduate students suffering from the same anxiety and uncertainty for their next meal. Perhaps my story made you uncomfortable, but this uncomfortability is not enough. My story could have been prevented if I had made enough money to just get by for a couple of months. As a student, my focus should be on my studies, not survival. I should not have to deal with school, work, a global pandemic, food scarcity, and nearnessness of homelessness. My suffering, my assault, and my empty stomach is still not enough for you to see graduate students as more than just laborers, but full-fledged and accomplished workers with passion and rigor for their career and education, and it is time we get paid that way. It is inhumane and disrespectful to the dignity of the human person to be treated as cheap labor. This further proves that ISU and other higher education institutions are interested in upholding profit and business. This is an academic institution. Your priority should be students. That's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ashley. Next, we have Heather O'Leary. Heather, you can proceed with your comments.
Hello, my name is Heather O'Leary, and I am a graduate teaching assistant and member of the Graduate Workers Union. Just as a note, I've been having trouble with my internet lately, so I apologize if I freeze partway through this statement. On Thursday, January 14th, the union delivered a stern message to university negotiators about the stagnant state of bargaining. I will read that message to you now. We in the ISU Graduate Workers Union have talked about the state of bargaining extensively among ourselves and what revisions or counter proposals we might make to respond to the university. However, ISU's proposals at this point are essentially no offers at all. Status quo wrapped up like something new. Graduate teaching assistants did not volunteer many long and stressful hours forming a union, preparing and engaging in good faith negotiations in order to merely approve changes or policies that the university has already made. Offering previously announced changes or policies is not negotiating at all. We do not believe that we are making progress or that ISU respects our time or the urgency of our situation. Since we began negotiations on October 31st, 2019, ISU has consistently stalled, even as a global pandemic emerged and endangered already endangered GTAs. A major example, ISU took over a year to respond to our initial offer. Over these 14 months, we have repeatedly tried to explain the dire situation many GTAs are in. Due to the low stipends, many GTAs experience economic insecurity, which leads to insecurities in other areas like housing, food, and healthcare, as you just heard. Some GTAs receive no pay at the end of the month after student fees are deducted. Others accrue substantial debt, losing money from coming to work at ISU. In the face of this urgent need, ISU offers small raises in accordance with state minimum wage law that will only affect a small percentage of our members and do little to ease the everyday danger our GTA's experience. In fact, we believe ISU wants us to negotiate against ourselves, which we have no interest in. As a result, we have nothing further for ISU at this time. We believe that it is fruitless to meet further until we have a mediator present. The insecurity and danger our members experience is too urgent and issue to waste time with ISU's non-offers. We are not going to willingly continue to put ourselves in this position when ISU has disrespected us time and time again. We are not refusing to negotiate, rather refusing to pretend that ISU is negotiating with us. If ISU has something to offer us that actually addresses the severe crises TAs face that ISU creates with low stipends, poor benefits, and high fees, we are ready and willing to hear it. But until that time, we have nothing for ISU except the notice that we request that the Labor Board impose mediation at this time. Yesterday, a delegation of the unionized grads served the mediation paperwork on Labor and Employee Relations Director Mike Kruger, the university's chief negotiator. To the Board of Trustees, as you meet today to consider yet another bonus for ISU's president, which is based on the value that he brings to the university, we ask that you also consider the value that GTA's bring to this institution. We ask you to recognize that we deserve at least a living wage. And finally, we ask that you advocate for us to ISU's negotiating team and encourage them to stop stalling and to negotiate with us in a respectful manner. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Next, we have Trevor Ricker. Trevor, please proceed with your comments.
Thank you. My name is Trevor Ricker. I'm a PhD candidate and a teaching assistant in the School of Biological Sciences and a member of the ISU Graduate Workers Union. I am here today to announce that due to the stalling and the non-offers on the behalf of the university's negotiating team, the union has formally requested mediation through the Illinois Educational Labor Relations Board. Teaching assistants at ISU voted to form a union in October of 2018 with a margin of 80% of the votes going for the union. And it took the university an entire year just to sit down at the bargaining table with us on October 31st, 2019. Even then, after we put forth our economic proposals, it took the university an entire 12 months, a full year, to respond with economic proposals, which are as such: no reductions in mandatory fees for graduate workers, no improvements to healthcare anyway at all, and that the university would keep the minimum pay rate for graduate workers just about at the state's minimum wage, a wage rate that the university had already announced regardless of our negotiations. It's not negotiating. This is wrapping up the status quo in contract language as if it is something new and improved, when in fact, they are not improvements at all and are instead attempts to undermine our negotiations. We are no longer putting ourselves in a situation where we allow the university to push us into bargaining against ourselves. The university's lead negotiator, Mike Kruger, has stated that in, that any increase in economic conditions for graduate workers would result in a subsequent raise in fee rates or tuition rates. And we know this is a ridiculous argument. There seems to be no issue with giving a $50,000 raise to the president of the university, who soon afterwards announced that he would be leaving the university, or giving a $150,000 raise to the basketball coach between 2017 and 2019. The university seemed to be doing fine with the over $160 million that it gained from the Red Bird Rising campaign. We're now going to act like the TAs can't earn a wage that would allow them to pay rent and buy food comfortably? Somehow, the university has no issue with finding creative ways to come up with money for rich administrators, but has a hard time figuring out how to help some of the lowest-paid workers on campus. We demand an increase to our pay, a reduction or waiver in mandatory fees, and an increase to our healthcare to include dental and vision coverage. Other schools in the state of Illinois have done this for their graduate workers. Even ISU gives fee waivers for other classifications of employees when they take classes at ISU. We know that ISU is able to help graduate workers make the right decision and help give us a contract that makes substantial economic improvements for teaching assistants at ISU. The working conditions for TAs are the learning conditions for students, and the university works because we do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ricker. That concludes our public comments for this morning. Thank you to all of our presenters. We appreciate you taking time out this morning to make your comments to the Board. Good morning, everyone, and thank you for joining us for this special meeting of the Board of Trustees. There are two purposes for today's special meeting of the Board of Trustees. President Dietz has announced his intention to retire on June 30th, 2021, and the Board of Trustees approved at its December meeting the hiring of an executive search firm to assist with the search for the next president of Illinois State University. In a few minutes, moments, I will introduce our partners in the search from Whit Kiefer, who will provide an overview of the search process. In accordance with the Board of Trustee bylaws, the Board of Trustees is responsible for the selection of a president. We will continue with the practice at Illinois State University of having a search committee that represents campus constituencies. The Board of Trustees will make the final decision on the hiring of a new president. The second matter on today's agenda is to consider, is the consideration of a performance bonus for President Dietz. President Dietz's contract contains a performance bonus in accordance with Illinois statutes and the Board of Trustees governing documents. That is based upon criteria which includes President Dietz's annual performance review and the Academic Senate survey results. During this meeting, the Board will move into executive session to discuss the results of the annual performance review for the fiscal year 2020 and President Dietz's bonus for fiscal year 2020. The Board will then return to open session to vote on this bonus. The Board of Trustees has engaged in executive, the executive search firm Whit Kiefer to assist with the search for the next president of Illinois State University. Whit Kiefer assisted the university in its search for a provost slash year and a search for the director of athletics this past fall. Whit Kiefer's efforts have produced qualified and diverse pools of candidates and assisted in hiring of Dr. Andover Tarhuli as provost and Kyle Brennan as director of athletics. Dr. Zach Smith is the managing partner and practice leader for education with Whit Kiefer and will be the primary contact for the Board of Trustees and the search committee throughout this process. Dr. Smith led both the provost and the director of athletic searches for Whit Kiefer and has become very familiar with the university and its leadership. Dr. Smith is with us today to share information about the search process. Dr. Smith, welcome, and please proceed with your comments.
Thank you, Chair Jones. I appreciate it. It's a pleasure for us to be here today. I thought maybe I'd just start with a little bit of an introduction about the team and tell you a little bit more about ourselves. I won't spend too much time on that, and then we can go into the search. As Chair Jones discussed, we, we indeed did the provost search for Illinois State, and we also recently wrapped up the athletic director's search. And with me today are my colleagues, Jeff Compher. Jeff is a principal in our, in our education practice, and he leads our intercollegiate athletics search practice. And I also have with us today Senior Associate Alejandra Gillette-Turan, and she is based in LA out here with me. I'm in Irvine, California, and Jeff is based in Chicago, so she's not too far from you. Alejandra worked on the provost search with me, so all three of us have experience working at Illinois State, and we're very pleased to be here with you to talk about the president's search today. A few things I thought we would discuss today. First is the timeline and process. So I thought maybe it'd be helpful if I gave a high-level overview of what to expect for the search. I won't get into too many details, but I'm also happy to answer any questions you might have about that process. And then we'd also like to hear feedback from the Board today and talk about what you hope we will find, or at least assist Illinois State in recruiting for its next president. So things like qualities and characteristics. What type of president do you hope that you'll hire here in the next few months? And then also, we'd love to hear a little bit more from the Board's perspective about what you think the priorities and agenda items should be for your next president. So before I get into that conversation, though, let me just start by sharing a little bit about how this process will, will work. And again, please feel free to go ahead and interrupt me or raise your hand. I'd be happy to answer any questions along the way. We'll start the search by doing a series of listening sessions. So this is actually our first listening session. We, we wanted to give the Board an opportunity to share your thoughts with us again, so that we can learn more about what you hope we find in the next president. Once we do this series of listening sessions, and that will include meeting with a number of different constituencies across campus, including the president senior team. We'll likely do some open forums. We'll meet with some of your alumni and, and develop our donor constituent groups. We'll meet with other leadership across the campus as well as we move forward. Once we get through that process, the information we learn from those meetings will help inform the development of a leadership profile. And the leadership profile is something that we use to go into the market and recruit candidates. And most of you have probably seen these before, but it includes a lot of information about the position, but then also information about the campus and some of those priorities and agenda items, like I mentioned earlier, that we'll highlight in that profile so the candidates know exactly what you hope the president will accomplish when they come into, when they come into the position. I also wanted to mention that in addition to some of those other groups we'll be meeting with, we'll also have a meeting with the search committee, of course, which will, which will be happening here in the next couple of weeks as well. And as I understand it, everybody on the Board is on the search committee, so that will be a very engaging and helpful conversation. So once we get that leadership profile finished, as I said, we'll go out into the market and we'll, we, we do a fairly comprehensive outreach process. We have a full team of researchers in our Chicago office who helps us identify potential targets for the position, and that's based on what we learned from these listening sessions. And we develop what we call a search record, where we have a list of potential candidates that, that usually can number close to 1,000 people. And we know that not all 1,000 of those individuals will be qualified candidates, but it's one way that we get the word out into the higher education landscape so that people can start nominating individuals. They can recommend people who they think might be good for the role. Then, of course, a number of those people will be interested themselves. So we do this broad outreach so that we can hopefully build the most comprehensive pool possible for your consideration. So we'll go, we'll go away for a few weeks after we meet with all the constituents and do our recruiting. The, the recruiting timeline that we've established for the search will probably take place starting in around mid-February and likely go somewhere toward late March, maybe early April timeframe. And once we get the pool developed, we'll get back together with the search committee. And the committee then will work together with the committee to help identify candidates who'd like to move forward to interview for the position. And that meeting will probably take place sometime in early to mid-April. We'll try to keep that as condensed as possible, possibly more likely in early April, but that's going to come around before we know it. So we're eager to get started so we can help develop the pool on your behalf. After that first round, after, I'm sorry, after that candidate review meeting with the search committee, we'll then move into a first-round interview process, and that will likely take place sometime in mid to late April, again, hoping to, to hit the target closer to mid-April. And then there'll be a finalist interview process that will likely take place sometime in late April or early May. We hope to be able to identify candidates so that they'll be able to start somewhere, well, a selected candidate will be able to start somewhere around July 1st. I know that President Dietz has said that he'd be happy to stay on if we need him to for a little bit longer, but our goal is to have somebody in place by July 1st. And we'll be making sure to communicate that to the candidates when we're out recruiting on, on your behalf. As far as how the, the committee will work with us, but most of the committee's work will be done early in the process and then after we go out into the market and do our recruiting. So as I mentioned, we'll have some of those initial startup meetings. We'll certainly meet with the search committee, gather feedback. We'll talk through probably a little bit more detail than I did today about how that search process will unfold. Then, like I said, we'll go away, and then the committee comes back toward the later stages and helps complete the work by identifying the candidates and so on. We do ask the committee, though, to help us throughout the recruitment process by potentially nominating candidates that they think would be strong, a strong fit for Illinois State. We also try to leverage the committee's expertise on helping us to identify a diverse candidate pool. We know that's important to you. It was important to us in the provost and the athletic director's search, and we were successful in developing a, a pretty strong diverse pool in both of those searches. So diversity will certainly be a priority in this search as well. But that's also one way that the committee can help us. It's helpful to have a diverse search committee. That sends a signal to the market that you care about diversity, and so we're, we're confident that, that, that that's been accomplished and that we'll certainly be able to develop a diverse pool for your consideration. So those are sort of the high points. I know it was very high level, but I wanted to pause here and see if there's any questions from any of that information I shared about the process. All right, well, hearing none, and if anything comes to mind, please don't hesitate to speak up as we continue on. Well, let me shift gears here for, for a minute and see if we could have a discussion about the position itself. Again, we, we would value your feedback on, on, there's really three or four main buckets that I mentioned that, that we'd like to hear from you about today. The first bucket is those priorities and agenda items. So if you think about a successful presidency, what does that look like to you? We know that President Dietz has been in place for, for many years, has had a lot of success. Maybe there are some similar things that have been accomplished that you want to keep that momentum moving on, but are there new things? Are there, are there priorities that you, when you look out five, six years down the road, are there things that you hope the next president will accomplish? So that's the first bucket. The second bucket is what are the qualities and characteristics that you think will be important for the next president? So things like competencies, skills, knowledge. What does the pedigree look like for the next president? So what does that background look like to you? You know, we work with a lot of institutions that tell us they'd like to consider both non-traditional and traditional candidates. So a non-traditional candidate might be somebody who comes up more from a business background, for example. You know, are those types of candidates appealing to Illinois State or not? Either way, is, is fine for us. We've certainly developed tools with both types of candidates, but we want to hear from you about what the pedigree is of the next president in your opinion. And then finally, those selling points or areas of excellence. What is it about Illinois State that makes you unique? What would attract candidates to this position? If you had the chance to sit down with candidates, what are things that you would share with them around what makes you special? What are your points of pride? Are there things that you would highlight? The fortunate part about your Whit Kiefer team today is that all of us have heard a lot of feedback from the campus about some of those points of pride and areas of excellence. We've really come to appreciate the campus and its collaborative nature, and it's, it's a very strong way in which that everybody seems to work together. We, we feel that on your campus. You know, we've done work across multiple institutions, and you don't always feel that culture. So there's a very strong team-oriented culture there. So things like that. Are there other things that you'd want to point out to us that we'd want to make sure to highlight to the candidates? And then anything else that you think would be helpful for us to know today? Anything about the search, anything about the campus, the transition? Anything that would be helpful as we go out and talk to candidates about this opportunity? So those are some of the points that we'd like to hear from you about today. And again, happy to answer any questions, but would love if somebody might kick it off and, and provide some feedback for us.
This is Mary Ann, and I guess I'd like to sit back and kind of think about this a little. This is the first that, you know, you brought the four things up, and I, I think it's important that we take a little time and, you know, maybe we do the emails or texts. I don't know how you do it with that. But I'd like a little more in-depth thought as to what you're really looking for, what you're asking, maybe some of what you've already seen from us. I mean, you've done the provost, and you've done the athletic director. And so far, we're all very happy with those choices. What was it, what, what helped with that? And I, I know we're not going to get into it today, but maybe it can be something in which you can, what you've said today can be sent to us to really look at it and to be sure that we don't just... look at it and to be sure that we don't just, you know, pop things out. I mean, you know, we all have very various things that we could say, but I'd like to take a little more in-depth thought on that.
Yeah, that that's no problem. I'm happy to, you know, send those questions over to the board and you can reflect on them. And also the 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 nice part about this process is that all of you are on the search committee. So we will have that meeting coming up here in the next, I think, couple of weeks or so. And so you'll have a chance. Those will be the same questions that I asked the committee. And so you'll have a chance to provide feedback at that meeting as well. But we wanted to at least give the board a a chance privately to discuss if there's anything that would be helpful for us to know before that meeting. But absolutely, that's that's fine. We can send those questions over.
I totally appreciate that. And it's it's good to get our minds thinking as to, you know, what what should be the next one is, you know, we are going through this and having other people listen to it too. And I'm sure they're all thinking who are on the YouTube watching as to what types of things they're looking at. But thank you.
Yeah, and part of the process too, you know, this is very typical when we go through these search processes, you know, a part of this is you, like you just said, kind of figuring out what is exactly what we need in the next president. And sometimes that takes place over the course of the search. And so by the time you get to see candidates, those discussions get a little more richer because now you can reflect on what you see in the candidates based on what's starting to formulate in your head about what you think you need. So a lot of those thoughts become a little more clear as you go through the process. But I can tell you just from the past two searches we've done, and I and I don't say this just because of the audience I have today, but it really is, I feel like a unique culture, Illinois State, and that that culture is something that is pretty easy for us to articulate in the marketplace, and it's something that really resonates with candidates. You know, you don't always see that. The morale feels, I mean, there's always challenges, don't get me wrong, but there feels generally like a pretty good morale. And like I mentioned about that team orientation and the collaboration, you really felt, you really get the sense that that exists in a real sincere way at Illinois State. And so I'm not sure what's in the water there, but it's it's something quite special and and you should be proud of what you've established at that campus.
As you do all of these searches, and you've done many of them, what is the one thing that like? Let's look at a camp, our campus. I mean, you've done a lot. What is the one thing that many applicants are looking for? Or are there any really specifics or, and I mean, not any specifics, but just as an overall for us to think about as to what what candidates are looking for and what do other people look for in their candidate?
Yeah, I I will tell you that the the usually the the strongest candidates that we see in these searches are looking for an institution where they can really make it an impact and a difference. And and that that comes out pretty consistently in most of the work we do. And you know, a lot of public institutions like Illinois State, they serve a very important student population. So you know, candidates want to know, and that's partly why I asked the question about, you know, what would you consider a success down the road? What are those priorities? Because candidates really want to know, you know, what what do I need to work on when I get there? And how can I make a difference at the institution? You know, if I'm going to serve in that role for five, six, seven years, are there, you know, three or four really important things that I can focus on to move the needle? And so that when I leave, I can look back and say, you know, I left a a pretty, pretty good, pretty positive mark on the institution and and can feel good about the work that they've done. You know, most, most of the most of the strongest candidates we worked with today aren't as interested in coming in and just sort of keeping things as a status quo, you know. You may have wonderful things happening and great momentum, which I know you do, but they still want to be able to, you know, help institutions go that way. Yeah. So. And I think you have a very solid foundation from which to start. It's a it's a great story. It's a wonderful community. You know, there will be a lot of people, I think, interested in in this position. We do usually get for president searches, you know, we we probably get around sixty to seventy applicants for these type of positions. Obviously, not all are going to be strong candidates, but probably somewhere around, you know, we would hope to have maybe fifteen or so, give or take really strong candidates, which we would call A candidates out of that group. And and that's kind of what we aim for, somewhere between fifteen and twenty.
What do you think the whole COVID thing is affecting? Is that affecting anything as far as we're looking at, you know, university presidents across the country? Or is it kind of like, you know, it is, it is, it's there. We all know it's there.
Yeah, it's a it's a great question. The good news is we've had, gosh, I guess we're close to what, ten months or so of this? I'd have to, time has taken on a new meeting in this era. But we've had a lot of experience now working in this environment. And, you know, I will say when we first started working in this environment, it was candidates, well, everything stopped. And candidates also, candidates also stopped looking at opportunities. So our pools initially were were challenged. And so we had to put a hold on most of our searches. But but now I I can tell you that most of our pools are just as strong as they were prior to COVID. They may take on a little bit different shape. And what I mean by that is we're seeing a lot of candidates enter searches where maybe there's more, I mean, we we usually get this, but maybe there's more of a geographical draw. I will say I've talked to a lot of candidates who maybe we're going to wait two or three years before moving closer to home, for example. Maybe they're a little later in their career and they want to get back to their roots. And so we're seeing people say, you know, I I was going to wait a few years, but I just want to get back to, you know, closer to family or so it's kind of changed the perspective of some candidates in that way. But overall, you know, we're seeing people get into pools, they're they're starting to recognize that, look, I I can't put my life on hold because of the situation. If I if people are still interested in advancing their career or taking on a new challenge, I think they've they're feeling like they waited long enough now and they're ready to get back into the market. The others, the other thing I we were seeing, especially in the fall, were retirements moving up a little sooner than people had done in the past. So you know, maybe they thought about waiting a couple more years before retiring, but now they said, you know what, life's too short. I want to move on. And and the pandemic has worn a lot of people out. I'm sure notwithstanding people on this call, it's it's been, it's been a tough time. So they've managed their institutions through the crisis. And now they want to kind of move on and maybe look at something else and let somebody else manage where they've been managing or retire altogether and and move on with their lives. So there are some dynamics at play, but overall, I would say the pools are pretty strong.
Great. Well, thank you. I appreciate it.
Dr. Smith, is there one or two things that you would recommend that really assist the university in a search? One or two just tips, maybe of two things that are practical that a university can do to draw the best candidates?
Yeah, there there are, there are some things that that you could do. I would say, and we kind of touched on this a little bit, you know, the the cadence of a search is important. So you know, once you get started and we kind of establish a timeline, keeping things going is important. And you don't want to get there, there are some things that can delay a process. The first is that leadership profile that I talked about. Sometimes institutions can really get caught up in the minutia of that profile. And, you know, they can start focusing on, you know, every sentence, every word, and start wordsmithing it to death where you've now you've you've spent, you know, a month trying to make it perfect. But in reality, you know, it doesn't need to be perfect. Candidates aren't looking for a perfect document. You know, you want to make sure, of course, you know, grammar, spelling, you know, all those types of things are accurate, but but, you know, you have so much information now available on websites and and other sources that you don't have to list every single detail in that profile about the position. You want it to be a really good document. That's what I tell committees, make sure it's good. But let's not get hung up on, you know, wordsmithing it to death because that'll delay a search. And if we delay, we don't have a lot of time here. So we don't we don't want to delay getting into the market. Then things like meetings, I mean, this is, you know, kind of logistical detail stuff, but getting meetings scheduled, you know, you have a large search committee. So I think it's thirty-three or so is what I am what I understand. So that's that's a big committee. I will say that's probably bigger than most. Knowing your campus, though, I think I think it'll be manageable because I think it'll be a very productive group. But, you know, imagine trying to, you know, schedule meetings with that many people. People are going to have to be flexible and maybe might miss a couple of things, or they'll have to make some other arrangements. But that's really important. And then you can imagine having thirty-three people in one meeting providing input and feedback, that that's a, that's a, that's moving a large ship, you know. So so we'll have to manage that. I think it'll be fine, but 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 those types of things can can have an impact. I think you know, another thing an institution can do is I guess it's sort of getting back to the profile, but really understanding what you're looking for in the president, you know, making sure you have that robust conversation about, you know, what what is it we really want? Because that needs to be clear to the candidates. If the institution isn't clear, and you don't, again, it, we know that there's going to be some some sort of thinking and evaluating as you go through the process. But if the institution isn't clear on what you hope the president will achieve and the kind of person that you want in the role makes it hard when you get to that point of selecting candidates, because then you have people, everybody's going to bring a different lens. But if if it's if it's not clear what the the whole of the group is looking for, then that can sometimes cause problems when you get to the end and you advance candidates to that finalist stage, because people may not be on the same page about what it is exactly you're looking for.
Zach, Bob Dobski, what what would be the ideal size of a search committee? When you said we got about thirty-three or something, because that sounds like an awful lot to start giving input and all that. What what is traditionally a size for it?
Yeah, you know, they they range in size. I I would say anywhere, I would say, let me say this, the average committee based on, I've probably done thirty-five president searches, the average committee is probably anywhere between fifteen and twenty. That's not to say there aren't larger committees. You know, certainly I've done, I've I've been on searches with, you know, twenty, twenty-five committees. This might be the largest, but I I understand the need for that. I I don't think it's a a bad thing necessarily, as long as it can be managed okay. But I I would say typical, probably fifteen to twenty.
Okay, thank you.
You bet. And I do think, you know, having the trustees on the committee, that's, 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 I think that will help because I mean, it it creates a couple of dynamics. It will help because there'll be more voices from the people who are actually going to be making the decision on selecting the candidate. So having the trustees weigh in early in the process will help when we get toward the end. And other people on the committee, you know, they'll be interested to know what the trustees think about the the search and about what what it is the trustees are looking for in their next president. At at the same time, sometimes having all the trustees on a committee can make people a little tentative and reserved, and maybe they may not be as vocal. So I would encourage you when we do have those meetings that that you say to the committee, you know, we really want you to be open and candid. We want, we want your voices to be heard. We will have to manage the process and be a little efficient with our time. But you don't want to create an environment where they feel like they can't be open and candid because they represent the campus's viewpoint.
So is our timeline, is our timeline doable?
I think it's, I think it's doable. Yeah, I think it's doable. As long as we don't hit any major delays, you know, we're, we don't have a lot of room for error as far as, you know, delays in the process. So it's doable. We can, we can put a pool together in, you know, six to eight weeks. We don't, we don't like to cut that too short because, you know.
We don't want you to.
No, I I hear you. We we prefer to have a little more time. Part of it is candidates need time to think.
Right.
Sometimes clients come to us and say, can you do this search in three or four weeks? And I say, well, think about if you were a candidate. Would you want to make a decision in in four weeks about moving your family across the country? And, you know, that's a big decision. So you want, you you need a little bit of time to have conversations, let them go back and think about it, follow up a week or two later. And they're, you know, again, there's sort of a cadence to the recruitment process as well. And 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 so, you know, you want to give candidates sufficient time to think so that they can get to a point where they feel good about applying. So that sort of, our typical time is about eight to ten weeks for the actual recruiting period. I think we mapped out like a six to eight week time for this. And that's that's doable, especially if we can get closer to the eight week mark. I I I'm not too concerned about that as long as we don't hit any any roadblocks. And like I said, I think this is going to be a very attractive position. Your campus is well positioned to attract very good candidates. It's a great story. You know, you're in a relatively, speaking, you're in a good budget situation. I I know the challenges with Illinois. But but you're doing better than most of your peers, at least. And so from that perspective, and certainly a lot of other perspectives, I think that there'll be a lot of things to draw people into this pool.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Mary Ann, thank you for making sure that Dr. Smith knows that the board does talk. I want to make sure that I give all of the board members an opportunity to chime in before Dr. We're going to have plenty of time with Dr. Smith and his team. As as he mentioned, we are all part of the search committee. So we will have an opportunity at that time. But you all know I love my round robins at these board of trustees meetings because I want to make sure that everyone feels like they've had an opportunity to speak. So I'm just going to go in the order that I see you on my screen. And I'm going to start with Kathy. Kathy, trustee Bone, do you have any particular questions for Dr. Smith or his team?
I'm not, kind of agree with Mary Ann. I'd like to think about some things for a little bit.
That sounds good. I just want to make sure I'm checking in, doing a pulse check. Trustee Navarro, Bob, what about you? Anything from you at this time?
Thank you, Chair Jones. I do have a list of a couple characteristics that I'm looking for, but I will certainly respond to that survey. I appreciate you telling us the timeline of recruiting and commenting about the 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 search committee's size and scope and and just to get started. So thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Trustee Turner, Jada, anything from you at this time?
Um, not at this time. I agree with Mary Ann. And like she kind of asked some of the questions I was going to ask just with the timeline and the search process. But yeah, I look forward to taking the survey.
Thank you, Jada. And Zach, Dr. Smith, Jada is our student trustee. So I'm always leaning heavily on her for our student perspective on things. Trustee Donahue, Rocky.
Thank you, Chairperson Jones. Now, I have no questions now, but but I, similar to Bob, I have kind of my own list of things I'm looking for. But what I want to make very clear, and he's on the call, and I'm I'm talking to President Dietz right now, is any, any suggestions I may have about a future leader, Larry, are not a criticism of what you've done at Illinois State. I have had, I can't say enough good things about your leadership. And and this conversation, I don't want to be awkward in that if we're we're saying something, it's viewed while that was maybe a fault of yours, or we didn't think you had that ability. So if you hear me say things, I I assure you it is not about thinking you've you've done anything wrong or or that you didn't have that ability. And I and I want to make sure you you understand that. But I I look forward to going through on this search. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Donahue. Rocky, I think that, thank you for saying that. I think that all of, I see all the board members shaking their hair, kind of agreeing with that. And Dr. Smith, I'm going to tell you that Rocky is kind of cheating because he's been on one of these committees before. So he's the most experienced and seasoned on the board. He was our board chair prior to myself. So while while Rocky, I I got some big shoes to fill in Rocky, but we appreciate his leadership because, again, he has the most experience on our on our team of trustees doing this. And so he always seems to strike, as you said, the right cadence. He knows exactly what to say. So thank you, Rocky. Next, oh, Bob Dobski, trustee Dobski, anything from you? I know you chimed in, but I'm going to give you an opportunity to chime in again.
Yeah, no, I, again, as everybody said, we're waiting to hear more about the search company that's going to be looking and their kind of their layout of of what they're going to zone in on. But but just a a couple of comments about the type of person and that, again, what I and Zach mentioned this too about the our ISU's current status in Illinois compared to, you know, University of Illinois and the champagne, we would be number one because of the leadership we've had here and and what's going on here with ISU. So so it is going to be very attractive for people, I think, to apply in that. So but but again, as far as, you know, using Dr. Dietz and his predecessors, not the one right before him, of course, but Not the one right before him, of course, but the one before him, Al Bowman and that. Is is just a people person and a great delegator. And be able to recognize and and to work with their vice presidents and all of the faculty and all that. I think that's. Just want to stress that, that that's very important when they look at it, so just to give Zach a little bit of something to go on, so.
Thank you, trustee Dobski. And and the one thing I will say, I mean, I know I'll I'll probably get tired of hearing myself talk throughout this whole process, so I'm gonna. Have to bear with myself, but the one thing I would say, um, which uh, Dr. Smith has pointed out is. Illinois State has a culture, um, and and part of that culture is something that we are very proud of, and and most of us, while we're. Part of the reason we're serving on this board is because of that culture, and that is what I don't want to see change. I certainly want us to have a president who is going to put their impact on the university and take us into the future. But there are some things that make Illinois State a great university and make Illinois State what it is. And whether you talk to somebody from nineteen seventy, or nineteen eighty, or two thousand twenty. Those are the bedrocks of what make Illinois State Illinois State. And I want to make sure that that is something that we do not change. One of the things we always say, and I hear this at all kinds of recruitment and all kind of meetings, is Illinois State is a big university with a small university feel. You know, that we're like a family, um, and that is something, that is one of the things that um, drew me to Illinois State. Way back, Jada, in the dog and pony years. No, I'm just kidding. It wasn't that long ago. But it's one of the things that drew me to Illinois State, and it's one of the things that I hear most often from parents and students. And I just want to make sure, again, um, when I'm looking at everything that I add to my list of what I want to see in the president. Um, that we don't lose what has made us be Illinois State.
Well, what, I'll make one more comment too for uh, Dr. Smith in that. Uh, one of the biggest things of the individual is going to be presented to the search committee is if they have a significant other. Uh, that's going to be coming on board with them and that, that's very important because, you know, in our current. Position with Dr. Dietz and his uh, wife, uh. She, she has been a big part of the success here of ISU too and that, so. Whoever we're gonna be looking at, again, I know it's all depends on the individual and that, but that that's a big factor too to to look at too with the search committee, so.
All right, well, I think, um, Dr. Smith, we've given all of the trustees an opportunity to chime in this morning. I can speak for the board and say that we are very, very glad to have your team on board. Um, we're glad that you took time out this morning to speak with us and to give us some more, um, you know, parameters regarding the search. Give us some food for thought. Uh, kind of hone us in on what we're going to be looking for and what we should, how we should prepare ourselves. Um, to search for the new president, because yes, the candidates need to prepare, but we need to be prepared as well. So thank you for giving us an opportunity and giving us some feedback of how we can make ourself more prepared. To receive the best candidates uh, for this search, so thank you. Uh, thank, thank you to you, Dr. Smith. Thank you to uh, your team. I'm looking forward to working more with both, with all of you all in the future.
Hey, well, thanks so much for having us, and I just want to quickly say, really appreciate the support of. Your support team, Dave, Brent, Jay, and Katie have all been incredibly helpful to us, so. Um, you have a, you have wonderful team there, and uh, so thank you for having us, and we. Are here to answer any questions at any time, so appreciate the the opportunity.
All right, thank you. Uh, we're gonna continue on, um, let's see. The next thing we actually have, we are going to move into executive session. Um, so uh, I will now entertain a motion to move into executive sess- session. For the purpose of considering the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal. Of specific employees pursuant to five ILCS section one twenty slash two, C one. Can I have a motion and a second?
So move trustee Bone.
Navarro will second.
We have a motion on the floor by trustee Bone and a second by trustee Navarro. Uh, Secretary Lauterbeck, can you please proceed with the recalling of the roll for the vote?
Will do. Trustee Bone?
Yes.
Trustee Dobski?
Yes.
Trustee Donahue?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Lauterbeck, yes. Trustee Navarro?
Yes.
Trustee Turner?
Yes.
The motion is approved.
Thank you. We will now move into executive session. Following the executive session, the board will move back into public session to consider a resolution for the performance bonus for doctor, for President Dietz.
Huh.
Everybody's popping in, I'm just making sure I have all my trustees here, one, two, three, four, five, six. I have seven, right? Yeah, seven. That math is challenging once it gets beyond five. Okay, so we are back into public session. Thank you for your patience for those who are waiting for us to return from executive session. The Board of Trustees of Illinois State University entered into a contract for services with Dr. Larry H. Dietz to serve as President of Illinois State University initially in March 2014 for a three-year term, which was renewed in September 2017. The Board and the President entered into two amendments to that, to the contract, which extended the term of the contract to June 30th, 2021. Paragraph four of the contract provides that the Board of Trustees shall make a recommendation as to a performance bonus for President Dietz for fiscal year 2020, that is from July 1st, 2020 until June 30th, oh, I'm sorry, July 1st, 2019 to June 30th, 2020, based upon certain criteria included in President Dietz's annual performance review and the Academic Senate survey results. After review and consideration of such criteria, the Board of Trustees recommends that President Dietz receive a performance bonus for fiscal year 2020 in the amount of $46,000. Can I have a motion and a second to approve the resolution 2021 dot one slash zero one, approval of the bonus for President Dietz?
So moved, Louderback.
We have a motion by Trustee Louderback. We have a second?
Second, Trustee Bone.
We have a second by Trustee Bone. Madam Secretary, can you please do the roll call for the vote?
Trustee Bone.
Yes.
Trustee Dobski.
Yes.
Trustee Donahue.
Aye.
Trustee Jones.
Yes.
Trustee Louderback. Yes. Trustee Navarro.
Yes.
Trustee Turner.
Yes.
The motion is approved.
Thank you, Trustee Louderback. That concludes today's agenda. I would now ask for a motion and a second to adjourn.
So moved.
Chair Jones?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I wasn't going to speak today, but if I, if I might, I would simply like to say thank you for the bonus. It's a, any success that I've had is really a reflection of a team effort here with our leadership team. I'm grateful for this. I would also say that I appreciate, you know, the sensitivity of this, of this bonus and like other bonuses that I've received in the past, the amount of this money really forms the base for charitable contributions that my wife and I have made ever since we've received bonuses and including organizations like the university, obviously, and then other charitable organizations within this community and outside of the community. But I very much appreciate the vote of confidence. I appreciate the efforts of the leadership team to, for all the successes that we've had. Appreciate your decision today and I'd also be remiss if I didn't say, thanks Rocky for your, Trustee Donahue for your earlier comments about the, the search and, and the characteristics and so forth. I want to be fully supportive of any way that I can be of the search process. I think you're going to be pleased with the, with Kiefer Firm. We've noted two successes with them and so any way I can be of help, I'm happy to do that, but very much appreciate all of you devoting this amount of time on a Saturday morning to two important topics. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Dietz. Thank you for your comments. I know you said you were going to be quiet today, but I know with your passion and zeal you have for the university, you just couldn't hold your peace, as we say in church. So we're going to have a motion for adjournment and then I need a second and then.
So moved.
A motion by Trustee Louderback, second by Trustee Bone. We need a roll call vote to adjourn.
Trustee Bone.
Yes.
Trustee Dobski.
Yes.
Trustee Donahue.
Yes.
Trustee Jones.
Yes.
Trustee Louderback, yes. Trustee Navarro.
Yes.
Trustee Turner.
Yes.
The motion is approved. Be safe, everybody.
Thank you.